I want to know more about y'all. Y'all can ask me anything. I think one-on-one conversations is the way to do it. I know I'm a newcomer. I know that I'm somewhat of an outsider in this sort of room. But I would love to meet with every one of you. Anyone who wants to have a phone call or meet for coffee, please reach out to me. I would love to find ways to work together if I was to be your next city councilperson. And I'd love to go ahead and begin that relationship now. Thank you. Thank you. Tommy.
As I mentioned earlier, I think it's really important to remember that these are first district seats. Or, excuse me, I'm in the first district seat. These are district seats. And so you have to know the community that you live in because that's where people are going to look when there's a problem. I'm from South Knoxville. I'm running for South Knoxville and Fort Sanders. I'm also running for everybody in this city. I've served in my entire life. And I think you've heard some things tonight that I just don't recognize. The city is at an all-time high. People are moving here as fast as they can. Property values are as high as they've ever been without raising taxes. Our debt is lowest in 20 years. Our tax rate is the lowest in 30 years. The city is thriving. Yes, we have problems. But when we have problems, when you have problems, whether it's at home or work, you don't call somebody who just now learned about the problem. You call people that have been working on this for a long time. Youth violence, homelessness are two important issues in this city. They didn't start this year. They didn't start two years ago. Both of those issues have been around for thousands of years. They've been around for hundreds of years. We've all been aware of them. There are spikes in them. But you don't look for help for people that haven't been serving those and don't know those. And you don't look for folks who are exploiting those issues to try to get ahead. The city is great. We've made reasonable progress on city council. We've balanced innovation with financial responsibility. And the city is a reflection of that great leadership. If you want the kid city to continue the thriving thing you see outside, you need to re-elect these folks who have been serving it, know the areas of opportunity. And yes, we've made investments in areas of homelessness and youth violence. That's not a light switch. I caution you to be aware of folks who come alongside and act like it's a quick fix. Or just say the problem. You don't have solutions or don't know the heart of the matter and how complex they are. It's easy to just say, "short police," "poverty," those words. But if you haven't tried to solve them, don't know the people who have been solving them and just need additional support. That's all you can do is look for those things up. I encourage you to ask the folks who are involved in this city the things that are bright and the things that need work. And ask who's been involved. Ask who understands where the vision of the city is brightest and where the wounds are and the things that have been tried. You need to elect the folks who have been reasonable and governed this city well. We have opportunities to fix things like homelessness and youth violence. And you will.
Thank you. Andrew Roberto.
Thank you very much. I would just remind you that experience matters. And that in order to do this job, you have to be willing to listen. You have to be willing to go out and talk with people. You have to be willing to find solutions. Now, we've heard some things tonight. And I wanted to make sure that we had the record correct. So I heard some things about an unstable budget. That sounds pretty scary. We have $63 million in our reserve fund for the city. Fully funded. It's there. $63 million. Over the four years that I've been serving on council, we've paid down the city's debt by $54 million. Guess what? In this fiscal year right now, we're going to pay down another $12 million. We've got AAA bond rating. Now, why is that AAA bond rating important? Well, you know, when you try to refinance your house, if you don't have good credit, what happens to that payment? It's not so fun, right? With the AAA bond rating the city has and has maintained and continues to have, save you $5 million this year when we refinance old obligations. So the budget's not unstable. We heard a lot of talk about electric buses. Well, you know what? Electric buses are good things. I believe that climate change is real. We need to address it. Those are $6 million projects over two years. You know what the city's matching funds are on that? Mostly funded by federal government grants? $600,000. $600,000 out of a $350 million budget. Public safety. We talked a lot about that. We have to make critical investments in our police officers and our firefighters. Just last night at council, I was talking about the need for retention and recruitment bonus. And that we need to see that come to council soon. We also, that's just one part of it. Then we also need to figure out competitive pay for our firefighters and our police. We have 416 sworn officer positions at KPD. That is fully funded in this budget. This year, 416. We have 364 officers. What the problem is not funding. I heard somebody say something about defunding the police. There is no defunding the police. There's 416 fully funded positions. What we need to do is concentrate on recruitment and retention. And that's starting with those bonuses and then finishing with competitive pay. And so I'm dedicated to keep working on that. We can do two things at once. We can do that and we can invest in violence reduction and violence prevention programs, which this council has done. The other thing we've heard about is economic growth. I've lived in Knoxville my whole life. And I remember when downtown had actual tumbleweeds. Does anyone remember that? Now, it doesn't look like that anymore, does it? No. How did that happen? It happened because of intentional investment and encouragement. A specific example. There were 57 properties back then that had investments. They started out with an assessed value of $51 million. Do you know how much they're worth now? Over a half billion dollars. So this city's not going in a bad economic direction. It's going in a good economic direction. We need to keep going in a good economic direction. The last thing I'll say, and we talked about people. And I mentioned that. Our people here are amazing in Knoxville. But we actually sit in a place where if you wanted to build an economic engine, this is the city to do it. Why? We've got Oak Ridge National Laboratory right nearby. We've got TBA. We've got UT. The building blocks of that engine are here. And we just need to keep pushing to get it to happen more. And I'm dedicated to keep doing that. I'm Andrew Roberto, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Ken Smith.
Your turn. I'm running for Knoxville City Council for three main reasons. Number one, we have a public safety issue. We have record crime. We have record murder. We have a chronic shortage in our police staff. I've talked with KPD several times. They need help. They are unrespected. They are underfunded. And they have a morale problem. They have a retention problem. And they have a shortage on the streets. Now they're going 12-hour shifts where if they make an arrest, they're like, "What is a 12-hour?" Now they're on 13- and 14-hour shifts. We have to support our frontline workers. Secondly, they are fiercely conservative. I think that our budget needs to be readdressed. Needs to be reprioritized. And we need to be focusing on the essential needs of our people. Thirdly, our homeless situation is chronic. We need to be addressing the mental health issues that they have, the housing shortage that they have. And we also want to be sure that we're helping the homeless that wants to help themselves. If we continue to give handouts, that's more to attract more homeless. Knoxville's a great community. I'm proud to call Knoxville home. My name is Ken Smith. I'm running for city council in the second district. Please vote from October 13th through 28th or November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Sappero.
The question was something that got known about me. I love comedy and I'm willing to bet you all wish I was Dave Chappelle. That being said, back in 2003, this little person right here had an issue with their neighborhood. I'm running for city council. And you'll know this. How Roberto probably might be the most first on this or Lauren. We're servicing a debt on the convention center. That was something I had posed back then. I was 23 years old and knew that that was a fiscal boogeyman. Now we're doing it all over again. $100 million here. $85 million there. $65 million on them. Basically, what's going to end up probably being a parking lot at St. Mary's. So it's things like that when you say, "Oh, our financial budget is fine." No, our mayor is a problem. That is just a, she's basically a puppet of the previous mayor who's just raking in the money on her husband's contracts on the side. So when you have things like that going on and you continue to perpetuate it and you don't say no, no more. I've said it on podcasts. I've said it all the time. You can say no as a council member with some courage and conviction. And, you know, if they don't like it, they outbook you. They outbook you. At least you said it. At least you stood up to your principles. You know? It's one of those kind of things that that's what you need. I went to bat against the convention center. And guess what? They didn't anyway. But, you know, they didn't get the hotel for $65 million. They wanted to tear down Holiday Inn, which is now being revamped, and then give it to the company that runs the convention center. Wouldn't that have been fun? That would have been another couple of points on your property tax. It's things like that that make people think of, you know, the old Good Old Way Network. I know about that. That's how far I go back. But that being said, I think this town is great. I chose to live here. I could have went anywhere I wanted to. I was in the music industry. Could have picked LA. Could have picked New York, which are horrible places now. But that's the point. This place is great. Started a business. We recycle window blades. If you want to learn about that, that's fun. That's a lot of hours and a lot of craziness. But, you know, the innovation corridor, like he said, it generates a lot here. We have an advantage. We don't even have to do much to seize the day and make this one of the greatest towns in the United States. I mean, because I already think it's there. It's just we're on a trajectory that's not as, it's not as sustainable or as good as it once was. And so that's all I ask you guys to do, vote with that kind of confidence and that kind of mentality. If you want better, you know, some of us have had four years to make it better. Some of us were little jerks in 2003 trying to make it better and weren't quite so successful. So it is what it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I do have to point out, because this is the Archimodals Alliance's building, and we don't condone condemning people who aren't here to defend themselves, even though you are a darling pig. Seema, go ahead.
Thank you. So in the 90s, I was working at the Ford Hill Building. And I would take the bus into right at the corner of Gay Street and Summit and walk up the hill. And it was scary at that time. But the fact that you may not know is I was working at WIMC and was the chicken mascot for a few years. There's a fun fact. But I also remember going to Market Square. And it was not a place that I felt comfortable. I left Knoxville for about 15 years. And when I came back, all of this was here. And it felt very good to be back. I know that the city has definitely changed since my family moved here. And I think it's going in a positive direction. I, in four years, I have learned so many things. And I've enjoyed it so much. I feel very honored that I'm in a position where I can go and see different, all kinds of different jobs, different viewpoints that I have never seen before. It's one thing for me to, for anybody, to say, "These are the problems. Give me four years and I will fix everything." It's another to say, "What are some more of the problems? What are the nuances of it?" And to realize that this is all a work in progress. A lot of the things that we're working on now, we've been working on for 30, 40, 200 years. There are other things that we need to address right now and we can fix. I think that a few of the important things on council is that character matters. It matters who you vote into office. It matters if they're willing to listen. It matters if they're competent. It's not the point that if you just speak louder or insult everything, that that will be a fix. It's about being open-minded, about listening, and being willing to learn. Thank you.
Thanks. Jim.
35 years ago, I started my first business out in Farrelly. It was a very successful restaurant. I've subsequently had 17 different businesses. Not all of them in the restaurant industry, by the way. Some in the service business. I'm in the customer service business, though. In 2007, I was approached by group leaders in downtown Knoxville. The then-mayor and a small group of, let's just call them shakers and movers in Knoxville, that had a vision for Knoxville. And they, for lack of a better word, recruited my wife and I to come out of Farrelly into a boxed-up, boarded-up city. And specifically Market Square. And we came down and we took a bite of the apple. And we were glad to leave the bubble of West Knoxville where I had grown up. Within one year, I moved downtown because we had started a business and we fell in love with the culture of the city. We fell in love with the people on the streets. The strange people on the streets in many cases. The homeless people we've all been describing tonight. The handful of homeless people. And the mental illness that was associated with most of those people. The poverty that was associated with those people. The hunger that was associated with those people. And we fell in love with that humanity, if you will. The compassion that comes behind that. What we experienced today, the benefits that we all experience of what you see now was not created in the last four years. Nor was it created in the last eight years. What you see today is the benefit of visionaries 15 years ago. And like I said earlier, we have a cultural shift going on. Let's just call it what it is. Our city has gone from a very conservative city to a less than conservative city over the last 12 years. Two different views, neither being perfect, let me add. But this cultural shift that has happened has put us on a trajectory. And it's really clear, if you look from a very high level, what has happened over the last 10 to 12 years compared to what happened over the last 15 to 20 years. If you like the trajectory they were on, if you like the lack of police force that we have and the continuation of that deterioration and the culture behind that, if you like the increasing homeless problems that we have, Black Stock Avenue, by the way, the homeless camp is larger now than when it was dismantled by the mayor just, what, a couple of years ago? It's back. Rumor has it that it's going to be dismantled again, maybe even by the end of the week. So when you see an influx of about, oh, I don't know, 500 or 600 homeless people that you haven't seen, if you like that, then continue down this track. If you like the way we spend money right now and continue to go into debt, and I disagree with everything Andrew Roberto just said, we are not having sound fiscal responsibility. We don't spend money on things that are bad, but we do miss the mark on the prioritization of the spending. I just knocked on 26,000 doors over the last seven months. We have flooding issues. We need speed bumps put in places. We need sidewalks in city, in certain areas. We need lighting. We have poverty everywhere. And yet, it's easy just to spend a half a million dollars on a piece of artwork. Forget the people that are getting flooded. We need infrastructure change first. It's called building a foundation. You don't build a business and go on vacation when you are going into debt. You go on vacation when you're sound. Equivalent to putting artwork out there. Or increasing greenways. And I'm not against greenways. I use them every day. But enough's enough. Let's fix the problems. And then let's resurge again when we have a strong foundation, a little bit stronger financial situation, and then do those things. It's an ebb and a flow. It's an ebb and a flow. We've been ebbing or flowing too long in one direction. We do not have balance. I am a man who believes in balance. My birthday is October 13th. That's the first day of early voting. I'm a Libra. It's the scale. I love balance. Please vote, no matter who you vote for. And thank you all for your time today. This has been a great forum.
Lauren Ryder. Hi. So I'm the fourth district city councilperson. And I won the fourth district primary on my birthday. And I hope that you will come out and start voting, October 13th through the 28th and November 2nd. I want to touch on several things here. The budget. There's been a lot of comments here about how we need to prioritize what's in the city budget. And then there's been a lot of comments about we should never raise taxes. 75% of the city budget is salaries and benefits for the city employees that do work, that empty the trash cans, that drive around in the trash trucks downtown, that go out and fill potholes, that police are sitting. We, so when you talk about prioritizing the budget, I really want to hear details about which part you're going to cut and shift from and whose job you're going to do away with so that we can add to another or give more money to another. The city police budget, as well as all the city employees, are important to all of us. We have increased this budget every year that I've been on council. We are in the middle of a salary survey, which under some other leadership, including Haslam, so it's not a partisan thing at times. The salary surveys to increase police salaries has not always happened. But the salary surveys for our police are comparative. They've looked at in the past and compared to other cities like Chattanooga, Johnson City, Memphis, and Nashville to figure out where those salaries should be. I want to make a point, since I'll pivot to policing. This study right here is the International Association of Cheats of Police. And I will tell you guys, being on council has ruined my eyes. That or I'm getting old. Law enforcement agencies across the United States are struggling to recruit and hire public officers. Though agency-specific needs exist depending on size or locale, the difficulty with recruitment is a significant problem that is broadly affecting the field of law enforcement. And I'm a librarian, so I always research everything before I vote on it, before I talk about it. If you come and ask me to sit down and talk to you about your issue, I'm going to research what you tell me. And we're going to make a good plan. And we're going to come up with the best thing that we can do with the budget that we have and the capabilities that we have here in the city of Knoxville. Law enforcement, if you go look at the studies, law enforcement has really been struggling for a while. It's not new. It's not since just George Floyd, but it's only gotten worse. Then we layered the pandemic on. We asked these people to go out rain or shine and work long shifts, even in the face of COVID. And they don't get the greatest salaries. But here's the thing. The police and fire and maybe not some of the other city employees so much, asked us to fund and put back in place a human resources department because they felt like they weren't getting a fair salary survey and a fair shake at their salaries. We, and as a council member, I voted for that and supported that. That HR director is now working on getting them more fair pay and making sure we can retain. Also, one of the things that happens with our police officers is they have civil service entrance exams. And one of the things that's happened recently, over several years, not just the last two, is to look at those civil service exams and make sure they're not weeding out people, that they're not biased in some way, and keeping some people from getting on the force. We had a previous police chief that didn't hire for two years. So that put us behind the eight ball. And now we're at the point, you know, that group called the Baby Boomers? They're retiring. They don't have to work anymore in the face of COVID. They're at retirement age. They don't need to stay longer. They're making some of the higher salaries, some of those folks that are retiring. We have had some murders here this year. Let's go ahead and talk about it. People keep calling it record crime. But again, if you go back and look at those studies, it's all across the United States and the world. It's not just Knoxville. Knoxville's not just going south. What happened in the last year and a half is COVID happened. We took away people's, not we, as a collective desire. COVID took away people's structure. And it stuck people at home. Sometimes it took away their jobs. And it changed. It put a lot more burden. Drug use went up. Suicide went up. No one here asked for COVID. No one across the planet asked for COVID. And it just really impacted us. And this is the time where we need to look at post-pandemic recovery, okay? So you can't blame somebody who's been sitting on council for four years for COVID and for the things that did or didn't happen in the last year and a half. But anyway, I just think it's really important when you talk about the budget and prioritizing how you're using it, you've got to really know the facts, that 75% of it is salaries and benefits. I'm also chair of the Audit Committee. And I work with the auditor, the independent auditor that comes over. And I'm happy to discuss. We are a model city for how well our pension is funded as well. Homelessness. This council has not sat and done nothing for homelessness. What happened is a pandemic happened and a lot of folks stopped going into the shelters. We have a drug use problem. We have drug dealers sitting down there selling drugs. And people are shooting up with narcotics that are much worse than they used to be, far more potent. And we don't have a solution for that. And I'm going to tell you guys, the city of Knoxville has the smallest pocketbook of the layers of government that we sit at the bottom of. And I will not sit here and be blamed for all that falls at the feet of the city government and the Knoxville Police Department. Over decades, we have stopped offering mental health. We don't offer healthcare. We haven't taken the Medicaid expansion, which, by the way, I put that resolution forward to ask the state to support the bipartisan effort that Briggs was asking to expand that. And our council, no matter what, whether they're Republican or Democrat, supported that unanimously because we're all smart enough to know that we have people out on the streets with mental healthcare issues and with drug problems that are just not being addressed. And so the other thing that I want to say is until we actually get real and start addressing that, we're going nowhere. And I don't think anyone's going to get elected and solve the problems that Jesus was trying to solve thousands of years ago. I'm just sorry. That's just not going to happen. When I moved here 16 years ago, I started attending public meetings because we had vacant properties like Men Villa in my neighborhood. And I bet some of you guys in this room are pretty aware that VMC used to be right across the street over there. And it got moved to get it off of the downtown area and help revitalize downtown. It got concentrated over in an area. And the businesses over there pushed back. And they didn't like the concentration of services over there. The problems still haven't been solved. We just moved the service providers. The city does work with service providers. The city works with service providers that want to work with the city. The city has been working with Karm and VMC. So again, this council has worked very hard to try and address homelessness. We have added more permanent supportive housing that was added in the previous eight years prior to us. We have added the low-barrier shelter. You cannot solve the homeless problem by refusing to serve the people with addiction problems. Okay? You're just not going to. So that's the service providers that we need. And those are the ones that are supported and work with the city. We've also gone from two social workers to 10 while I've been on council. And the county has added social workers. I've gotten recent complaints about homeless camps out in West Knoxville. And it turns out they were in the county. And I will also comment on the large homeless camps that were mentioned. I live really close and walking distance to where Holston Gases. I'll finish up about Holston Gas and then I'll move on. Holston Gases is on Baxter Avenue. And that used to be the worst camp in the city. The paramedics would not go in there to help or bring people out when they died. It was a terrible camp. That has been revitalized. And that's one less place that people are camping in. and it's pushing them to other places. So, we do have these problems. We are working on them. Happy to talk about all the many solutions. And I appreciate you guys' time tonight. It's really hard to cover things in thirty seconds to a minute, so happy to talk about things at length.
Garrett Garland, if you're still alive.
Should smile, guys. Raise positivity back. But in all seriousness, as I said, all the issues aside, just take a look to your right, to your left. I mean, every single person in this room right now cared enough to be engaged and concerned about what's going on in Knoxville. Like, I just think that means to be applauded and it's worth mentioning. Yeah, the answer, there's one thing I will leave you guys with. You guys can see us up here talking for a few minutes, see us on social media. That doesn't give you a lot of insight. Yeah, I was going to say, what do I want you guys to know about Garrett? I look back at some of the things I've done and what's gotten me to this point in my life. If I run the clock to think about things I've accomplished, you know, I was a jazz musician growing up, successful playing around here in local groups. I was valedictorian in my high school. State president of Leadership Community Service Organization. You know, the youngest salesperson hired in three different companies. And I don't say stuff like this to brag. It honestly doesn't matter who's born in my life. Well, that's said and done. Anything I've ever done in my entire life is because I put priority and intent on it. And when you look at accomplishments, things people do, you don't see what goes on the back end, the thousands of hours, the nights of studying, the nights of practice, the diligence, and the intent. And a lot of why I'm standing here right now is solely for the reason because I want to make this place better. And I think we stand to be better. I would say this time to time, yeah, we are lucky to live in Knoxville. And a lot of us have harked on some of the issues that we're facing. Yes, we are addressing them, but the fact of the matter is, if I look at where we were four years ago, eight years ago, now, are we taking steps in forward? Yes. Are things going where they should be? No. I have worked essentially fourteen hours a day every day for seven months. I get up at six in the morning. I work out. I work. I spend time talking to voters, knocking on people's doors, listening to their concerns. And that's what's opened my eyes. I've lived in this city my entire life. I've learned more in the last eight months than I ever have. I listened to people that invest and build businesses and bring jobs to here, and looked at a whole room of thirty people telling me they don't want to invest in Knoxville anymore. I sat with multiple members of the police department saying they are dissatisfied with the leadership and feel unsupported by our city and need more. We need to be more competitive. I've listened to people telling me, yeah, they need sidewalks, sidewalks and speed bumps. But also, I've walked up on four funerals, four mornings of life in the last six months, for people that were shot and killed and murdered in the Sixth District. That's absolutely unacceptable. It's not the city we need to be living in, not the city we need to condone. And all this aside, when you look at the candidates you vote for, the most important thing is that you take an act of interest, and you show up, and you vote because it matters. Who governs locally matters. And I can just promise you this. I'm not going to solve every single one of these issues. Not one person on this little council can solve crime and homelessness and police in four years. I can promise you this, that I will make it a priority to focus on the important things. Making our community safe, bringing jobs and businesses, incentivizing growth in our community, and making Knoxville a place people want to live and stay in. What we do now influences where we go, and that's so incredibly important. I would love the opportunity to serve you, and I sincerely mean that. I'm not here for any other reason but to serve and give back, and I really appreciate your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Glenn, take us home.
Okay, I promise I'll keep it short and sweet. Thank you all again for having us hosting this forum, and thank you all for being here this evening. I think what you've heard in closing remarks throughout this candidate forum is passion. You've heard passion from people who are sitting in these seats, and you've heard objectives. You've heard concerns from people who want to serve in these seats. One of the things that I always say is that it's always important to ask yourself why. Why now? What's the motive? What's the angle? Why a person wants to serve now? And if it's the first time that a person has stepped out to roll up their sleeves and work in a community, get behind nonprofits, or to explore the district that they want to serve, that should give you pause. When people talk about there's a cultural shift, I'm going to disagree with you. There's not a cultural shift that's going on in this city. But what there is, is a concerted effort to turn city races into partisan races. One of the beauty, the beauty of city races is that it is nonpartisan, which gives you the opportunity to evaluate each person that is running for a seat and to make the best informed decision of who do you think is the best person that will listen, that will serve, that will advocate, regardless of any party affiliation whatsoever. If that's what people are looking for, then you look to the county races and you look to the state races. I also want to caution that no one can bully their way into moving the city forward or getting a vote. It's easy before you sit in these seats to say what you want to do and how you're going to do it and make a lot of promises. But once you sit in the seat, you realize that it is a learning experience. It's a learning curve, and that, believe it or not, you just want to vote. And what someone told me is that, Glenn, do you know what you get with one vote? Absolutely nothing. You can get absolutely nothing done. And so, while some people may say, oh, this council is just a rubber stamp, I wholeheartedly disagree. This council can sit and have very intelligent and sometimes heated debate, disagree, and then after we disagree, we find common ground. And regardless of who wins that debate, we can still respect each other and have mutual conversation and mutual goals, which is to move this city forward. So, what I want to say today is that I also am passionate about serving. It's an honor to serve this city. It's an honor to serve this district. And it is something that I do not take lightly. I, as well as my colleagues, I agree with what each of the incumbents said. Serving in these seats and in this capacity is so much bigger than us.[1762.58]